I'd like to call to order the Oxford Township Planning Commission meeting for April the 28th, 2022. Please stand and pay your respects of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, not to roll, please.
Okay. Corey Bailey?
Here.
John Nold?
Here.
Ed Hunwick?
Here.
Robert Turner?
Here.
Item four, the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight, Thursday, April 28th, 2022.
I'll second that.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of minutes from the Planning Commission regular meeting of March 24th, 2022.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission regular meeting dated March 24th, 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion and it's been supported. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments on items not on this agenda or part of the public hearing. Commissioners' comments. Mr. Turner?
I have none.
None, sir.
Mr. Nold?
I would just like to say we have a very large agenda for tonight and we're just going to try to do our very best to work through it and ask for your patience.
I just want to acknowledge Zach Michelle's work with all this tonight. He spent a lot of time and effort doing this. He's our hired consultant, planning consultant, and I know he gets compensated for all this, but he still did a lot of work and he put a lot of effort behind this and I just want to acknowledge his efforts and thank him for that. I also want everybody to know that I've been on this commission for a few years, but I've never been in this position before. We have three members absent, unfortunately. Two of them are the board chair and the vice chair, so it fell upon me to take over. So you'll have to bear with me.
Item eight, public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments regarding (a) zoning map amendments, (b) zoning ordinance text amendments, (c) definitions, including medical marijuana definitions, zoning districts, schedule of district regulations, special land use review process, schedule of uses, medical marijuana cultivation buildings, wireless communication facilities, dwellings in non-residential districts, medical marijuana facilities, medical marijuana regulations, landscaping and landscaping plan requirements, parking, signage, environmental provisions, including noise, exterior lighting and lighting plan requirements, site plan review, condominium developments, planned unit developments, administration enforcement, planning commission duties, table of contents and history.
No kitchen sinks, though.
No kitchen sink. Item one, presentation by petitioner.
I'm here as a petitioner since Oxford Township is the official petitioner. I will talk about the zoning map amendment portion of this first. I suspect most folks here are most interested in that. Is that okay? So to reframe the discussion, zoning ordinance has two parts, the text, the big binder that we're going to talk about second, and the map. So it's kind of, they're both together as one ordinance, and so that's why it's bundled in part of this. So part of the amendments are to the map. They were identified earlier in our 2022 work plan that the ORC forwarded this body and then was forwarded to the township board. Your packet tonight has a couple of maps. One, the proposed zoning map, which is also there on the side. I do want to note a couple of things that have been omitted from there, just for clarity for this discussion, that will, would be added onto it, were to be adopted. So there are two areas that have consent judgments. Reference to those judgments will be added. There's the dark box around it now, but the reference, the wellhead protection area would get onto there as well. And there are a couple of little nerdy details, like there's a block that has to say, this is to certify that this is the official zoning map that the clerk signs, a list of the amendment dates, and the scale and those types of things will get on there. But for now, this is just to look at the properties. You've also got, I'll try to not put that on top of the TV microphone, a proposed zoning changes map. Looks like this. That's also up there. That just shows all of the properties that are going to change, and if you're doing the math at home, it's slightly over 400 properties, which the clerk tells me is about 5% of the township. In your packet, you also have zoning districts map. This is the current map. You will have future land use map. This is from your master plan. And the proposed marijuana overlay district. All right. So the genesis of this was last fall, actually last summer, we received the application for a zoning permit. A fellow wanted to put a pool in, and as we were reviewing his property, we noticed that it was zoned multiple family. The entire area had been developed with single-family houses, with single-family housing standards, and that was the expectation, and that's what the future land use map said. The challenge with it being zoned incorrectly is the multiple family had much larger setbacks, and if your house burned down, you can't rebuild a house because you have to build multiple family. So that was kind of the genesis for starting this. We started looking in other places, and so we've identified a couple of places in the work plan that we wanted to look at. Those areas where we knew that the current use was not consistent with zoning or the future land use map, the areas that the current zoning were not consistent with the future land use map, that were likely to be developed in the short future, like under five years, and to create an institutional zoning district, which the master plan calls for, and we limited it to public institutions like this facility, the water treatment plant, the water tower, and the schools, which is the blue on the map there. The zoning ordinance does not have real clear guidance for criteria to look at for zoning map amendments. It's rather says, "The Planning Commission shall evaluate all factors relevant to the petition." So that's kind of broad. What most communities will look at is if it's consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the master plan, compatibility with the site and potential uses, compatibility with the surrounding area, and potential impacts on the infrastructure and public services. So with the goals, policies, and future land use maps, we did not do a deep study for every single parcel. Instead, because they were largely aimed at getting them more consistent with the future land use map, our approach was that it's going to be consistent generally with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the master plan. I do want to note there were a couple of deviations from that with the plan. Let's see. I'm going to wander over here. Let me tell if you can't see me. So, for example, that fell up where the bank used to be on Drainer and 14. Master plan calls for the front half of it to be office and the back half of it to be residential. We thought it didn't make sense to split a property in half like that. So that was part of the thing. The property at 930 South Drainer, where Sanctuary Hills comes in, where Drainer does a little dip, the master plan calls for that to be institutional. As you'll recall, last summer, Clearview Homes came in and petitioned and received a zoning map amendment from that, for that property to R3. So that, we didn't want to go rezonate again because they already received the blessing to change it to the other. There are a couple of other minor ones like that. To the west of us on Seymour Lake Road, there are several really small properties. They're the ones that when it rains, the water is up to the driveways. Those we propose to be R1 because it's most consistent with the size of those properties and it's consistent with the properties across the street. But aside from the small deviations like that, the idea was to generally get them as consistent with the future land use map. Again, site compatibility and the surrounding area and impact on infrastructure. The presumption was that because we're trying to get them more consistent with the future land use map, that the infrastructure and the impact and compatibility had been studied as development of the future land use map. As you can imagine, so for noticing, I want to say staff worked their butts off to do the noticing for this. In Michigan, when you do zoning map amendment, you're required to publish notice in the newspaper, and you're also required to send notice to that property owner and everyone within 300 feet. When you do the math, it came out to over 2,500 letters, I believe, we sent out. There were some duplicates because there were some overlapping that we just didn't get. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act actually says if you have a cluster of 11 contiguous properties, you don't have to notify them, and we could have done that, but we sent everyone a letter just we felt it was good for transparency, for them to be included in the discussion. So there's a lot of work. I will say, though, I was expecting a lot more questions with that volume of letters we were sending out. But there were a couple of common questions we received. One of them is, why is this happening? Who started this? As I mentioned, this was part of our work plan where the township hasn't done map maintenance to make those adjustments for some time. So we did discuss doing this in parts, some now and some later in the year, but we figured we'd rip the Band-Aid off and get it all done. We got a lot of questions about common recreation areas. So if you look on the proposed zoning changes map, you'll see a lot of green in the subdivision Those are used for recreation, for common use, for parks, for preservation, whatever. Most, some of the subdivisions currently have it zoned for recreation, like down the road here, the golf course is zoned for recreation, but these other ones didn't have it. The master plan calls for it to be private recreation. The zoning ordinance, though, only has one recreation district, so they were placed in that common recreation district as has currently been done. And folks were concerned that if it's owned recreation, does that mean any yahoo can come in and start playing in our park? The answer to that is no. It's still your park. You can use it as you like. You still control who gets into it. So there'd be no changes in there. If you decide you want to let folks in, you can, but this doesn't require that or allow that. We did receive a couple of questions from folks that they wanted it, they wanted their property to be in a different zoning district than what was proposed. Because the township is the applicant in this case, and we're trying to get it as close as possible to the future land use map, we tried to do that. So it's difficult for the township to deviate from that. Individuals can request it at any time and they can come here and speak. Because we did publish the nature of the zoning map amendments from this district to this district, a deviation from that would likely require another public hearing for that individual property. And we received some questions from Twin Lakes. Do we have anyone from Twin Lakes here? I guess I must have answered the questions really well. Twin Lakes is down here, next to Savannah Ridge. Their questions were because they have a consent judgment from 1982 and 1994 that lays out how the property was to be developed, and that's one of the dark boxes around the property. So they were curious, why the heck are you rezoning us? We've got this consent judgment. And the answer to that was, for consistency with the future land use map, anything that's established and still standing in that consent judgment is not affected. That would be controlling. However, the R3 district is most consistent with the standards in that consent judgment. So if a judge someday said this consent judgment doesn't stand anymore, they would have a much softer landing than if they fell into suburban farms, which it currently is. Let's see. For the marijuana, I guess any questions before I go on to the marijuana overlay? Okay. For the marijuana provisioning overlay, so this is, a couple months ago, we saw this to reset us. The idea is that the township has created or would create these overlay districts in which medical marijuana provisioning centers could be. It's still a special land use, so it still requires a public hearing, but the idea with using the overlay districts is to limit the overcrowding, allow for separation, and ensure that they're near busy streets where there are a lot of eyeballs and law enforcement that can see them. So that's kind of where we did the spacing on them. And that is the basics I have for the zoning map amendments. We did receive questions about, how can you, why are you zoning to a district that doesn't exist yet? And the answer to that is, the districts are being created at the same time that the map is being colored in. So the map with the new institutional districts would be effective the same instant that the districts and the district standards become effective. All right. Any questions?
Have all the institutional areas where that new zone, zoning application been identified?
So let me reframe and make sure I'm understanding your question. Are you asking if all of the areas identified as institutional in the future land use map are included? Okay. They are not. What we tried to identify at this time was properties that we knew were owned by a government entity, such as this building, the water facilities, the schools, and properties that were owned by utilities. So the substations. We also included, although it was a small deviation from the future land use map, an area that has been donated to the township, well, sold for a dollar, for fire station number three. The other areas that have been identified that we didn't include were for places of worship, and that's because that can be a bit more of a challenge, and we wanted to leave that discussion for when we had more time to just look at it. And there were some properties identified on Drainer with the, I'm going to mess it up here, with the Dominican sisters, that we know that's going to change ownership and perhaps look to be reused. So we didn't rezone all of those to institutional, or we aren't proposing to rezone all those to institutional. But the one that the school purchased, we did. You want to talk about the provisioning overlays more, or?
Just have one comment on that. Thank you. Hunsorn Shop Attorney, working on the marijuana stuff. As you know, you saw this back in February. As far as the maps go, when the township board reviewed it, I guess earlier this month, they did indicate that they would like to have three overlays, and the northernmost layer overlay would be removed. So if there's, if that's something that you would consider, I think that's where the township board would like to go, and any recommending motion might include that. That's all I've got. Yeah.
Yeah. Would you review why we came up with the certain districts and the benefit of using that particular property that was selected for those districts?
Yeah. Zach made a good point as to the separation requirements. I think when we talked about this back in February, we talked about having a separation requirement between the various districts and the various establishments. The idea will be to have one provisioning center per overlay district, three licenses for, so one would go to each district. The reason for the change, and I'll just jump ahead a little bit and then I'll circle back, is that since you saw this in February, the law has changed quite symmetrically. There's been two cases, the Pinkeye case and the Water Lake case, that have come down to suggest that municipalities have much more control over the regulation of marijuana than we had when we saw you in February. So with that information at hand, we've gone back and modified it and beefed up the zoning ordinance in several ways, which I'll go through later, so that it's, you know, township maximizes its ability to regulate and coordinate. And we thought, given the significance of the changes, it was best, it should be brought back to the PC. Going back to Mr. Nold's question, the overlays, like I said, are designed for separation requirement. They're also designed for access to M24 and to have visual contact, as Zach mentioned. And the third item is to have revitalized, rebuild the township. We're trying to, you know, one of the only things you can do is encourage redevelopment and improvements to existing properties, and that's one of the reasons the overlays were considered.
I do have a question.
Yep.
All this involving the marijuana districts and how we are going to regulate them and all that, all this actually violates federal law, right?
That is correct.
So what happens if the federal government gets, has a problem with one of the owners of one of these facilities, and they want to come in and do whatever they do to enforce federal law?
They may do that. The DEA-
They can do that.
Yes, they can. The federal government, up until recently, has done that in certain cases. When certain operators have attracted the attention of the DEA or FBI, they have enforced their actions. Marijuana means a scheduled one controlled substance under federal law, which makes it illegal for any purposes. Michigan law is different. Michigan law says it shall not be prosecuted, is not, is not, shall not be enforced against them. There was this Michigan Supreme Court case that addressed that issue in terms of whether many communities said, well, prohibiting everything prohibited under federal law. Michigan Supreme Court said, no, no, no. Under the Medical Marijuana Act, the original act, you can't do that. That blanket prohibition does not apply because we're saying you can't be prosecuted under state law, not federal law, and that's the difference.
Just another question then. Could the federal government come in if they had a problem with a particular operator of one of these facilities and shut them down? Could they come in and say, all of your marijuana zoning districts are in violation of federal law and they must be made null and void or eliminated? Can they do that?
No, because it's states' rights. Members finding things is a state's individual rights. We have our laws, they have theirs. They can separate that. And so, no, the answer is not. With the federal law, I've taken the position, at least last I looked at, and this has been a little bit a while ago, US Attorney Eric Holder during the Obama administration issued a memo saying that despite marijuana being illegal under federal law, it is his office's recommendation that it not be enforced. And to be honest with you, for a very long period of time, that memo has stood as the sort of guiding principle. I know that Congress has taken up the idea of changing the classification of marijuana. To my knowledge, and I am not as good at federal law as am the state, that has not changed. Any other questions?
I will take an opportunity. There are two more areas that, as I was looking at the map, popped my attention that I'll describe. So we did receive a question about this property on the corner of Drainer and Oxford Lakes, saying that it doesn't have a property or an address with it. So the state of Michigan says when you're noticing, you need to describe the nature of the request. You need to share the addresses for the property. If there are no addresses, you don't have to create addresses, but you have to describe it somehow. We received a query that the parcel ID we used to identify that doesn't exist with Oakland County, but when you do look at the Gateway GIS, including this afternoon, it does show that property. So folks who are interested are able to type it in using the publicly available materials from the county and pull it up. We also, with the notice, everybody sent out the map, so that could also be considered fulfilling the requirement for describing it. For this property up here, if you look at the future land use map, you'll see it is colored in a red. It calls for mixed commercial industrial, but it calls for a smaller area. And the question received about that were related to the fact that that area doesn't follow a property boundary. So it's actually portions of two properties, and it is much cleaner and preferred always to follow property lines with the zoning map amendments. However, this area was shown, it's consistent with an area that was added to the water and sewer district. So there are established boundaries that the township acknowledged, and the reason why it was included, larger than the future land use map, is the township board, through adoption of that area, kind of set policy that we intend for this to be more intensive. The other question relative to that is the future land use map calls for it to be mixed commercial industrial. We don't have a mixed commercial industrial district yet, and if you look at the zoning plan, I think on like page 117 of your master plan, it says none. There are no zoning districts. The C2 was the closest that we have. In the future, we will explore creating that mixed use, and for the back part of this year, we are working on a commercial industrial mixed use PUD overlay that would include that area. So I wanted to share that, that we did receive questions for that. Because this is a bit peculiar, I may recommend that the Planning Commission consider taking, opening the public hearing and getting comments just for the map. I suspect most people here are interested in the map changes, and then we can talk about the text later. Or I could talk about the text now, too.
We can talk about the map and then come back to the text.
Okay, dawg.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing at 7:27.
I have a motion.
One second.
It's been supported. Do I need real call for that? Kelly?
I'm going to say yes. So, Nold?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Okay. 7:27. Yeah. Okay. I will open the floor to the public to provide any information, ask questions, or make statements regarding the zoning map. I would ask that any comments that you make or any statements, that your total time be limited. I'm not sure how many of you are planning on speaking, so I'll just say four minutes for right now, for the sake of not letting this run until midnight.
And for the recording secretary, your name and address when you start.
This is true. Name and address. Is there anybody who wishes to comment?
I talked to Zach about this, and it has to do with the property on Lakeville Road next to-
Oh, name, you have to provide your name and address.
Oh, sorry. My name is Jack Shigina, and the property I'm talking about is-
I need your address, too.
1701 Ray Road. The property I'm talking about is mine as well, is 1570 Lakeville Road, East Lakeville Road. Yep. It's proposed to be zoned at, from suburban farms to R3. Right next door, you have a trailer park, which are real small lots, and we would like to see, me and my neighbor, we're going to develop possibly at some point into a subdivision, small little subdivision, next to that park, and make it R1. And I can show you where it's at, if you can see it, but it's very, they're a very small lot, because there's three lots here. There's one that's real small, and it's about 1,600 square feet, which is in the realm of R1. 15,000, right? I could have said longer again, that throw. And then the other two are Ernie and Bonnie Cox, and I'm Jack- And then the other two are Ernie and Bonnie Cox and I'm Jack Shigina. Ours are right next to it. These are just little ones. But we're trying to get it to where we can split our properties. And then this one here being, making it R three, is still not in the realm of the size of R three. Because that's not an acre lot. It's only probably three quarters or, or third.
So your properties, uh, just on clear, just to the west of the, uh, manufactured home community?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you have the school, school garage, all that kind of stuff right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we're asking to have that, should R three have an R one, if we can do that? That's all I got. You got that up? Just yet?
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Um, Zach, can't they, at the time that they propose a, uh, development?
Yep.
Uh, propose a zoning change at that point in time?
Yep.
They just can't go ahead and do it now and have it done, or?
Well.
I, I can address this after.
Yeah, go ahead.
After, after public comment.
All right. Is there any other comments?
Mine's more of a question. I'm Ryan, yep, Ryan Wasman, uh, forty-seven Carriage Lane Court. Um, and I apologize if I didn't read, ask questions ahead of time. I believe that we're going to be, have a small property behind us become institutional. And I just want to understand, if I'm correct, what it, what is, what is that going to be and what's going to be used for? It's right.
So it's this blue, we're right over here. Okay. Forty-seven Carriage Lane Court is right here at the blue.
Yep, I'll, I'll.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That was it? Yes, sir.
Scott Creed, two four six zero Somerville Drive, Oxford, Michigan. Uh, before I start, I just want to clarify that I'm sorry I typed this letter late last night. I sent it through my work email. It has nothing to do with the place that I am employed at. These are my recommendations and concerns as a resident of Oxford. I got two notices. I have a piece of property that I am adjacent to in Oxford Woods that is being zoned institutional. And another one with, I, I am within three hundred feet of that is being zoned to recreational. I tried to send my letter last night, so the planning commission and, uh, Mr., is it Michelle's? Um, could at least read it and you guys would be, um, I get a little verbose in my writing, unfortunately. I used to be a planning consultant for a number of years, so I try to cover everything. Um, and obviously I didn't get to send this till about ten thirty at night, so. So my first, uh, concern, which, uh, uh, Mr. Michelle's kind of, um, got to was about the institutional zoning. I, I still feel very strongly that the language should be adopted before property is zoned to it, just because things could change here tonight, even as, even the way that the agenda is set up. We're talking about properties being rezoned before we're actually talking about the definitions in this case. And my reasoning for that would be my next concern, which is the rezon, which is the recreational. So when I was going through the zoning ordinance for what entitles recre, or what holds recreational, there's a lot of, recreational is kind of a catchall when it comes to permitted uses. And these would be uses that would just be allowed on the property without getting notice. And my issue in Oxford Woods is our development does not have an HOA. So the property that's being zoned recreational is actually still owned, some by the developers, some by other entities. So technically, they could, in certain cases, put, uh, carryout restaurants, outdoor patios, sit-down restaurants, banquet hall, marina, probably not a marina. Golf course, probably not a golf course, not that much property. But the property is more than ten acres when all combined, and it's all contiguous. Seasonal temporary sales, accessory buildings and structures. So those I have, if you, if you were able to look at my letter on page two, I have those in red. Because they're kind of the ones that, they're permitted uses in the recreation. And I understand why. I just came, uh, had to leave my daughter's softball game early so I could get here. And for, um, Seymour Lake Park, that's, that's understandable because you have concessions and stuff like that. So my, my plea, I guess, is that perhaps a conservation to clo, uh, to more match the future land use, because there is a conservation portion of the verbiage in the, in the master plan. Uh, that is titled, it's private-public conservation park areas, if I recall. Anyways, if, if a zone could be developed for those areas, and I, I understand that maybe Oxford Woods, maybe we're just different. I understand that like Waterstone probably, they have an HOA, so they probably control all those areas. We, we do not. So that is my concern with that. Um, and that's why I brought it up to your attention. Um, or perhaps just a revamp of the recreational and making some of those things that I mentioned, maybe those are special land uses. So then property owners within three hundred feet and adjacent to it would be notified if something like this was going to happen in that zoning. So Mr. Michelle's answered a lot of my questions about the, the property. The, I didn't know about the rezoning, so I was looking at a zoning map that was online from twenty nineteen. And apparently you did rezone the property, uh, to R three for the, uh, southern half of the Crossroads Village. Um, the other two, um, he explained. Happy with that. So really, those are my two main things. And, um, so a lot of my letter, uh, now, and the reason why I didn't talk to Mr. Michelle's in the first place is because I tried to follow, um, the notification that was given to us. So I did contact the, uh, township first, and that's where I got all my information, but, and also going online. Um, and, you know, I wrote this last night, so I, I appreciate the, I appreciate what the planning commission is trying to do. I appreciate the, the ordinance alignment and, and what your planning consultant is trying to do. I do not want to disrupt anything. Perhaps just, uh, maybe, maybe in the institutional rezoning, then a public hearing just for the properties that are going to be put into those, just so there's time for the public to actually read. Um, I wasn't really able to read it until yesterday because of, it was in the planning commission packet. Um, so that was my, my problem with that. But other than that, that was it. I thank you for your time.
Is there anybody? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Joe Say, fifty-five West Drainer Road. Just got a question. Zach, maybe you could shed some light on, you talked about, uh, combination, I believe, C two slash light industrial slash PUD. Did I hear that correctly?
Yep.
So is that a just, again, for clarification, is that just a certain zoning area, or does that mean like any C two zone or any industrial zone can apply for a mixed use of both?
I'll address that.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious.
Anybody else? No? Since we have nobody else, we have a motion?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine.
Second.
We have a, um, a motion. It's been supported. Roll call, please.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Okay, hearing is closed. Comments from township consultant?
All right. I should have brought hats as a prop tonight, I guess. Um, so I will address, um, the Lakeville properties that Mr. Shanga, did I? Shigina? Shigina. Uh, mentioned, the reason why they're proposed with the R three, um, again, is the, the township acting as the applicant, we wanted to get as close as possible to the future land use map. And when you look at the, do you, future land use map, it calls for those properties to be in the suburban residential, which is most consistent with, that's what the zoning plan says is R three. When you also look north of the road, those properties call, that the master plan calls for even lesser densities. So when we compare it with the folks down here on Seymour Lake that were proposed for R one, they are immediately across from a whole bunch of R one areas. If the planning commission is interested in considering it, it should be removed from this batch because our notice said we're proposing to rezone it from this to R three. So folks may not have been interested to come in with it being R three, but they may be interested if it's R one. So that would require plucking it out and re-noticing for that as the different zoning district. As mentioned, the, the applicants, the property owners can come in at any time outside of this props, process and request a zoning map amendment on their own, um, which has traditionally been how zoning maps amendments happen in the township. The question about the institutional, it was for these properties, which includes the property we're sitting on now and the township's water treatment plant. Um, so if you look at the schedule of uses, you're not supposed to be able to have this building on the current zoning district. So we're trying to get it to match up just to reflect how it's being used. And one of the, one of the reasons why communities like to have the institutional district, um, you know, there are two approaches for these types of districts. You can allow them in whatever district as a special land use or as a permitted use. The advantage, and, and they, they are, some institutional are permitted in various zoning districts. The advantage of having an institutional district is it provides a bit more stability and predictability for the neighbors. So if the township decided they wanted to move downtown Oxford and sell this property, if it's zoned institutional, there are going to be a couple of extra steps between there, a bunch of houses popping up on it. So it provides a bit more stability, um, and predictability for the folks. Let's see, for the recreation.
Zach, real quick, I have a question on the institutional. I think you've answered this, uh, before, but I just want to clarify. Can, um, county, state, and federal governments come into an area like ours and want to erect a government building for their needs? Anywhere they want, or they have to comply with our zoning?
It depends on which body is doing it. Um, so for example, public schools. Uh, generally, so Oxford Community Schools generally don't have to get local zoning approval for, um, instructional facilities, school buildings, or for athletic facilities. If you have different standards, like a standalone sign ordinance, they would have to follow that. But if it's in your, um, zoning ordinance, they don't have to. And prisons in Michigan also have that exemption. I'm not sure that, why prisons and schools are together, but that's a a fun thing to think of. Um, but that's because in the state constitution, there's been designated a person who's in charge. And so the courts have said that's the person who's in charge of prisons and public schools, different people in the state of Michigan. But if the DNR comes in and they want to do a campground or boat launch site, they are subject to local zoning. I'm not too familiar with the federal government, but generally they are subject, except for certain things that is reserved for the federal government's auspices.
So if, if the school district wanted to erect a school on property that's zoned, say residential, would then we rezone that district automatically?
We would have to go through a process like this.
Property, I mean.
Yep, yep. Um, and, you know, depend on how long they intend to have a school there. If it's a temporary school or something, you, you may not want to do that. But yeah, it's a peculiar quirk. Um, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad.
Plagues to any of our zoning areas.
Correct.
So agriculture could be in the same boat.
Yes, for, for public schools, not private schools though.
Right.
And, but now other s- public school things, like just a bus barn, if it's off from the campus or just an administrative facility, like the office where the superintendent or other folks are, those don't get the same exemption. So those would still be subject to local zoning.
Churches get exemptions too, don't they?
No.
No, they don't.
No. They, for churches, the, the federal law is Rupa, religious land uses and institutionalized persons. And you can have regulations and standards that they have to follow, but it can't place an undue burden on the practice of, of religion. So for example, you can't require a special land use for a church, but allow a, a concert hall in the same zoning district. Because when you look at it, the impact of the uses are pretty similar. So you can, but you, there's kind of the test about, are you causing extra burden on them beyond what other folks similarly situated have? Uh, for recreation, the master plan does indeed have two different types of recreation districts that it calls for. One is private park slash conservation. The other is public park slash conservation. Uh, as I mentioned, the zoning ordinance now only has one recreation that rules both of them. Uh, currently, both public and private recreation uses are in the same recreation zoning district. The main difference is the ownership and in some cases, the intensity. However, there are private park conservation areas that are relatively intense with the use, and that's by design. So golf courses are private parks and conservation. Um, and they may have a restaurant or other types of facilities associated with this. So that is kind of a gap in the master plan and the zoning ordinance, that there's not an area that's just park without other activities on it. That's, that's kind of a, a bigger conversation, I suppose. For Mr. Say's question, uh, in the future land use map, there are a couple of different districts that are proposed that don't exist currently. So village commercial is generally most consistent with the C two. But there's also a new thing called village mixed use, which contains some of the current C two districts and the C one districts. And that's intended for areas closest to the village of Oxford's, where there's a mix of commercial, for mix of commercial and residential. Farther up, uh, this is primarily along M twenty-four, once you get north of Ray and north of Dunlop, there's, uh, a new area that's called for the industrial and commercial mixed use, which is kind of heavier mixes of commercial industrial uses. Uh, the zoning ordinance now does not have either of those. One way that we've started to get into that though, is when we redid our schedule of use table last year, we allowed upper floor residential as a special land use in the commercial zoning districts. So if you build in, um, commercial district and you want to have apartments above you, you can do that. So we're getting to there in little bits and pieces, not the full way though. The idea for later on is to establish a planned unit development overlay that focuses on commercial, industrial, and mixed use. So the whole mix, which would be consistent with the industrial, commercial, mixed use, and the village mixed use. That's, that was a bit much of a chew for us to take on at this time. But we are, the ORC may be twenty percent through that PUD work right now. Did I answer all the questions, or at least?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do you want me to start on the text?
Sure.
As the applicant? Okay. All right. So as a reminder to frame ourselves, zoning. So as a reminder to frame ourselves, zoning ordinance has two parts, the text and the map. And this is going to be the talk about the text. Majority of these again were identified in our 2022 work plan. The real big changes are the creation of an institutional district, the marijuana changes that you saw previously that have been remanded back with some changes, a new article for residential planned unit developments, a new site plan article, and then what I call a bunch of entanglements or tentacles or shrapnel related to those throughout the zoning ordinance and some minor housekeeping. All right. If I had a bigger dice here, probably be easier, but I'll try to make do. So normally, you guys don't get to see the, the cover page or the table of contents. The table of contents just gets updated as necessary with pagination and those types of things, but included it so you guys could see all the sections that have something changing are highlighted with the gray. In Article Two, the primary changes, well, the only changes are related to the marijuana definitions. So there's, there's a bit of a change from what's currently in there that is proposed. I'll let Mr. Rentrop speak while I drink some more beverage about the marijuana definitions.
I don't know if it makes more sense for me to just go through the whole marijuana stuff at once, is that all? As I mentioned earlier.
You might want to clarify this for the audience, just make sure everybody's following this. Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Zach, would you fill this in with our method tonight? We're just a little bit off the agenda. We talked, I'll just do it, correct me if I'm wrong. We talked about the zoning map. We had our public hearing. Now we're going to talk about the text changes that support the zoning map. We're going to isolate out the marijuana situation now because we have Mr. Rentrop to talk to that. And then I believe you'll step up and talk again. Then I would also suggest to the chair that we ask the public for any comment that they may have after you two are done.
Right.
Thank you.
Could you explain real quick? Why the state spells marijuana the way it does and everybody else spells it differently?
That is, that is a longstanding question. There actually is a reason, I've forgotten what it is, but the, the official regulation is with the N H and not with a J.
I just want everybody to know that if you got the text.
It's not a typo.
I know, I just want people to know that, that it's spelled the way the state spells it.
Yep, that's exactly right. If you look at the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, maybe that's why I changed the name to Cannabis Regulatory Agency, I don't know. So like I said before, we brought back this amendment to you. I have with me tonight, I don't know if this makes it easier or more difficult, but a copy of what was changed since you last saw it. If that's beneficial, I can pass that out. If not, I'll just go through with what you've got.
That, that should be what you guys have.
Okay. All right. So the marijuana thing, like I said, we changed a number of different parts on it. Page is out here. I'll just walk through the changes. I think I can do this fairly quickly for you. The first one is, is to the, well, the marijuana definitions have not changed since you saw them last time. There have been no changes since in that regards. The changes since you saw last time begin in five, section five thirty-five B five. so this is the prohibited uses. One, we removed the language regarding medical marijuana dispensaries because they're not included in the prohibited uses. Obviously, that sales is permitted and it's covered as a provisioning center. Two, we've added a new thing provision, actually as of today, I spoke with Mr. Knoll today. He is proposing an addition, a clarification really, which I've added to paragraph, to paragraph B five, a new addition. This is not in your packet. You want me to do, hand this out to you because I think it's, and I know it's confusing, but I think it's beneficial. So you see, there's two versions of it. One's labeled A and one's labeled B. If you focus on A, because I wasn't sure which one you guys were working off of, we'll go through that one. So if you look at page seven on A, B at the very top there, so prohibited uses, we've added as of today, the number five, the co-location of a medical marijuana facility. There was some concern that you might have a situation because of the way the overlays are laid out, that you could have provisioning center in front and a grower in the back. And we want, that was never the intent of the ordinance. So by adding this provision, it should, arguably wouldn't happen anyway because it's already zoned accordingly. But to belt and suspended it, we've added that provision, that provision's being proposed to be added. The second change that you'll see is in paragraph C below it. This was proposed to be added, which is marijuana cultivation building shall have designated loading area in which the secure transporter can make and receive deliveries. So when you're, obviously you're carrying a valuable product, the idea is to have a place where the secure transporters can come in. It was originally proposed as bay doors, but we've clarified it a little further to make it a designated loading area. Of course, you'd see that as part of the special land use approval. The next change was considered as in paragraph D three, well, excuse me, D two, which you've already saw, that was actually a recommendation that change came out of your meeting in the end of January. Paragraph D three, talking about the provisions that exclusively occupied a freestanding building to, this was proposed as the idea of having it just freestanding, no, no other, the strip mall parts, it'd be a new build, the idea being to, to keep it as a standalone project. The next change was in D four. As we talked about earlier, the idea now is to specifically based upon this new case law to have one, one provisioning center per overlay. And that's what that addresses. If you could go to page eight, one B at the top there. Let's see. Want some clarifications on, originally it was set up so there would be no windows, the idea being, you know, to not have it on display, concerned by natural light and having some also visibility. So the idea is this was changed around to allow windows and allow natural light to come in, but not to have those be display areas or marketing areas. Paragraph F below that, the township was converted from May, require posting performance guarantee to shall. This was a suggestion by Mr. Knoll today. The idea being is that treat them all the same and work at it that way. Skipping ahead now to page nine, you see under I general, there are two, there are a few changes into that. And number one, annual proof of such compliance should be condition of special land use period. Additional proof isn't necessary because we, we're going to have that anyway. So that's for the state, the state and local regulations. So that's just more of a housekeeping area. Materially, two wasn't really material, just clarification. Number three, retail sales and products customarily incidental and accessory to the use of marijuana is prohibited in marijuana operation buildings, except that products customary and incidental and accessory, I shouldn't say accessory, excuse me, to use of medical marijuana, which were allowed and sold at retail sale. So this would be, this was a proposed change that to allow retail sales of things associated, customer associated with sale of marijuana, such as vape pens, things of that nature. Number four, talks about secure transporters, says that, you know, these restrictions don't apply, you can't conduct outdoor activities. Obviously, it didn't make sense to apply it to secure transporter has to move marijuana in on other trucks. So that's what that changes about. Number eight was a housekeeping matter. Number nine, this paragraph was deleted, it seems like a bit too far, but the idea was that you prohibited caregivers as well. And the idea was that this is addressed by state law, so it seemed redundant to have it here, so we just removed it altogether. Number twelve, we talked about the original language that you saw had only one wall sign. After discussions, it was proposed that there should be a wall and monument sign which satisfies the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Going to the bottom of page eleven, application requirements, proof that the applicant is licensed under the township code of ordinances, the code requires license has been removed. The latest proposal is to have these two processes work, run concurrently so that you can apply for your special land use permit for a marijuana facility as well as seek your license from the township board. And that's why that provision was removed. Because you may not have, they may not have a license yet, but they should be in the process at that point. Number four, finally, number four, at the top of page twelve, this talks about the new construction. Again, we're trying to encourage new construction, new build, high quality reconstruction, rehabilitation. And the idea is that this language will address and encourage that type of construction. And those are the changes that have been made since you last saw it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question just for clarification on that.
Sure.
When it stated that retail sales are prohibited from accessory items, trying to get, I mean, were you talking about like pipes and all that?
Well, except for marijuana, and I'll be honest with you, we're doing these changes today and that really that and accessory should be in the red line below that. So it should, it should say retail sales of products customarily incidental to the use of marijuana is prohibited in marijuana operation buildings, except that products customarily and accessory, customarily incidental and accessory to the use of medical marijuana in which are allowed to be sold at retail under state law may be offered for retail sale as licensed provisioning centers.
So they can be sold for medical purposes, but not recreational purposes.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No. All right. Thank you.
So I'm going to take back up then in the proposed text amendments. All right. In Article Three, the proposed changes are related to the creation of the institutional zoning district, the marijuana provisioning overlay, and the residential planned unit development overlay. And I'll talk into the, that overlay a little bit later. So we add them as districts that are established. We add intent for the districts. The institutional district is taken primarily from the master plan, the language that's describing it, the marijuana provisioning overlay. You saw that last time. The R P U D, the idea is, is consistent with descriptions in the master plan and the purposes of having a planned unit development. The other change, or the next change in section three point five is to the schedule of use regulations. The biggest one that you'll see and the funnest one for formatting was we added a column for the institutional district. Again, it's kind of a big deal to add a new district, so we've added a column. We've populated it with potential uses based on our best match for the description of the district in the master plan and the nature of the use. We did also add utility substation as a listed use. It's not in the schedule of use table right now. And one thing that you will note is that the marijuana cultivation building has been removed. And instead, we created a whole table with the marijuana uses just in its subsection. That was primary because we, we get a lot of calls about that and we figured it was easier if it was just popped out in one place, easy to find, both for members of the public and staff. Let's see. We have also in the schedule of district regulations, added standards for the institutional district for setbacks for building height and lot coverage. Because of the variety of potential uses, we didn't propose a minimum lot area or minimum lot width. So on LaPierre, there's a really small property that's used for a gas switching station. Consumers Power, I think, right? And that's really small, and so we, we didn't want to have a minimum when we can see that there are uses that are consistent with that. In four point, or in Article Four, special land uses, the changes proposed there are just for housekeeping. So later on in the administration enforcement article, we added standard language for conditions of approval. So like whenever this body approves a special land use or site plan, that would apply to both of them. The township attorney would prefer for the language in that section to absolutely mirror the zoning enabling act. This is a little bit deviation. So one of the potentials would be the zoning enabling act language specifically addresses special land uses, not site plan. So one of the changes we could do for this is add a reference to that section of the zoning enabling act. That's conditions of approval shall be consistent with that section of M C L and the section sixteen point thirteen, such conditions of approval of this ordinance. Same thing, reapplication, we added standards later on for the reapplication process. So this was modified for consistency with that. For use regulations in wireless communication facilities, we've added institutional districts as places where the cell phone towers can go as a special land use.
Zach, what number are you at? Five point three two?
Yep, page twenty-five. So it's a new district and, and we have them on there, so I will skip past the marijuana uses. Thank you for the breather. Into Article Six, this is page thirty-two now. Six point seven, that revision there is for consistency with our recent zoning ordinance amendment that allows for second story residential as a special land use in commercial districts. The way zoning ordinances work, if there's a conflict, the most recent controls, so it was already here, but we just wanted to make the language clear and consistent throughout. Marijuana regulations, we already covered that. On page thirty-three, landscaping and screening fences and walls, we've added the institutional district there is requiring. Again, it's kind of a big deal to create a new district, it touches a lot of places. For the landscape plan information, we have replaced that kind of bullet list with a table. And we've separated between things that we want to see at preliminary and final. And the intent with having this table is to make it easier for the applicants to prepare the plans. As you'll see later, this is consistent with what we've done with the site plan information. Basically preliminary, it's the very rough sketch is the room to put the landscaping there. And then at final is when we look at the details. And stop me if anyone has questions on the way, I'm, I'm trying to do quick. Article Eight, this is related to the marijuana uses. We just add them to the parking schedule. We probably could remove video rental establishments, but they'll be there as an artifact. Article Nine signage, this is now page thirty-six. We made the change from churches to places of worship. That's consistent with changes we made previously and with relupa. We've also added a couple of districts to sign standards. So we've added the institutional district and we've added the recreation district. Right now, there's no reference to signs in the recreation districts, so we, we put those in. Under environmental provisions, page thirty-eight, we've added institutional for the noise. And we've modified the residential lawn care exemption. So if you're running a mower between certain hours, this would apply whether or not it's for your house or for your business, because the lawnmower is going to make the same sound either way. And I do want to note for the record that Mr. Knoll wants us to examine this further, but it was a bit much for us to get through at this time. For exterior lighting, again, we've gone from a bullet list to a table and separated out things we're looking for. At preliminary and final, most of the details you see there are at final. And for ease of use. And under G, we've, we've again changed language, churches to place of worship consistent with.
Page numbers?
Yep, I am at page 41 right now.
Thank you.
Site plan review. A lot of changes in this article. Our primary direction was to make the process easier for the community and for applicants, but still have adequate review of what folks are trying to do. Where's my cheat sheet here? So this, and what I've tried to share with the other township attorneys that assume this is all a new article. So it's all redlined, there are some concepts in sections that are very similar, but assume this is all new. So intent and purpose has been expanded and the intent and purpose, we also exploded it out from a really dense paragraph to bullet points. That's to make it easier for folks to be able to digest. And by expanding some of the intent, it's intended to provide better clarity for when there's any confusion or conflict is that we have something to go and look back at. We have then moved authority up to the front, just saying who's responsible for what. The highlight on that, I'm going to do differences between what's proposed and what you've currently got. So right now, and proposed, well, proposed, the planning commission is the final stop for all regular site plans. So someone's putting in a culvers or a site condominium or a site, or building condominium. The planning commission is the final stop with respect to the site plan. Currently, if it's a site condominium or subdivision, you guys make a recommendation to the township board. But everything else, you're the final stop right now. But this would place you guys at the final for all of that. For administrative site plans, currently it's just the zoning administrator who gets to review and approve those. The proposed change would be the zoning administrator, the township planner and the township engineer, and all three of those folks have to agree. Right now, I'm two of those three people, so hopefully those two votes would agree whichever way, but, so it's slightly expanded who has to look at that. We clarify that condominium documents are by the planning commission, or you can defer that to the township engineer, attorney. For development agreements, this is a new thing that you don't currently have. So development and agreements are basically the contract between the township and the developer with certain expectations for how the development's going to be done. A lot of the things that typically live in a development agreement are in the master deed condominium documents. The challenge with that is the township isn't necessarily a party to that, so it can be difficult to enforce it. So having the separate document allows a bitter, a bit more authority for the township to act. And the township board would be the approval authority for that or the waiving authority. So the township board is still involved with site plans, but they're kind of looking at bigger, broader policy questions instead of how many shrubs are in front of the store. Variances, go to the Z B A as currently, and if someone wants to appeal a decision, that can also go to the Z B A, which is same as current. We expanded a description of when site plans are required. So all permitted use in the R, multiple family, mobile home, C1, C2, office, R O. Institutional districts, gravel overlay, recreational and marijuana provisioning and institutional districts. So any of the permitted uses in there require site plan review before this body. Further, any commercial institutional recreational, recreational use regardless of zoning district requires a site plan. All special land uses, that's the same. Multiple unit dwellings, planned unit developments, condominium projects, platted subdivisions, alteration. So it's very similar, but expanded slightly just to fill in some of the gaps. Now, one big change is administrative site plans, I'm on page 43. Right now, there are only three things that qualify for administrative site plans. Remember, this is done by staff, it doesn't come to the planning commission. Those include accessory use without a variance or site modification. Building construction or addition of 2,000 square feet or 10% or parking additions. So if someone wanted to change up their landscaping or add another driving lane for culvers, those things, they have to come back to the planning commission. We proposed expanding those quite a bit. The options, and again, we tried at the O R C to find things that we were comfortable with not rising to this body's having to look at it. Including changing facing, phasing, minor building location, minor building height, building size increases, making buildings smaller. Adding, reconfiguring a site for barrier free access, so if you want to put in a ramp and you've got a business, let's say on LaPierre with one of those really tiny lots. You don't have to come to the planning commission to put that ramp in. Pedestrian amenities, a group daycare home, family daycare home. Those may seem a bit of an outlier, but they are defined as special land uses. So this would allow pass because they're generally not so big in impact. Outdoor sales and display, if you have an approved use and you want to add outdoor sales of plays, this would allow administrative review to do it. On a temporary basis, changing landscaping from what has been approved. Making your parking bigger, a limited amount, reconfiguring your parking. Adding or moving stormwater management and regulatory changes. So for example, you have a site plan and you have showing where the driveway is, but then M dot comes in and says, no, you have to move that 10 feet to the north. This would allow amending the site plan without having to come before this body. Alright, on page 44, general site plan provisions, this is kind of a new section where we tried to grab all the general things that apply to all site plans in one easy defined place. You do now allow for combined site plans, but some of the details aren't really fully fleshed out. So we tried to add it, the detail saying if you've got multiple phases, you have to have one preliminary site plan for everything. And then one final site plan for each. If you need a variance, you can't do combined. What information, the review process, and that if we determine it's really complex, we can require it to be split into two. For multiple phases. Again, we, we clarify one for all, the whole project, and then one final for each. If you have to do a variance, this is not addressed in your current zoning ordinance. We say you get a preliminary site plan, you get your variance, and then you get your final site plan. So one of the challenges, if you need a variance, is the planning commission doesn't want to approve it first because they feel like they're binding the Z B A to make a decision. The Z B A doesn't want to approve it first because they're worried they're then forcing the planning commission to approve something, so this kind of clarifies the roles and responsibilities. Clarify that development agreements are required, that you can make changes to preliminary site plan as part of final site plan. That you need to have condominium documents, performance guarantee, and again, we, we reference the conditions of approval. And we specifically add some language in there that if your development agreement isn't approved and your condominium documents aren't approved and your M dot approvals aren't approved. They're automatically conditions of approval. So that's kind of if we forget to say that, just as part of our motions, it's covered, it's written into the zoning ordinance that you need to get those approvals too. Alright, I must be going fast enough that no questions are popping up before I hit the next topic. Next, in process. So pre-application conference, currently it's an option for applicant. We're proposing to make it required, so before you come in with your plans, we want to talk with you to make sure you're going to have good plans. We clarify what information we expect with an application. We clarify that if you're bringing us a site plan, we can go on your property to check and make sure that things are consistent. We have added review of completeness, so there've been a couple of times when this body was questioning why materials got here. This is kind of an opportunity to pump the brakes. So if we get a site plan that doesn't have important information, we say it's not complete. And then for preliminary. So it's going to happen at a public meeting as it currently does, but a public hearing is not required. So it gets noticed on the bulletin board out here and it gets published with the regular agenda in the newspaper. And the agenda goes on the website, but folks within 300 feet don't get a letter. That's consistent with what's currently been done. For action, it's similar as before, you can approve it, postpone it, or deny it. A couple of things that we did add, that the affirmative vote of four members of the planning commission shall be necessary for approval. So there's a question, if we only have five people, is it three, but it's of the entire membership. Same thing for denial, and then we added some language that if it doesn't receive approval or denial, so it doesn't get four votes one way or the other, it's automatically postponed and it comes back the next meeting you have. So if you don't have enough people here to, to get four votes one way or the other, it just kind of clarifies the process. And then we clarify that preliminary approval basically is just conceptual and it gives you the right to apply for final, not start building. One change is that preliminary approval currently is valid for 12 months. The proposal here is to extend that to 18 months. The idea is that allows more time for applicants to get other approvals in before they apply. And we also add that we want to get a copy of that approved preliminary plan for the records. Right now, we don't require that copy come in. For final site plan review, very similar process, public meeting, but not a public hearing, the same potential actions. If it's approved, you get to submit your permits to do the actual work. I'm on page 49 here. For expiration, again, this has been expanded from 12 months or proposed to be expanded from 12 months to 18 months. There is also an opportunity for an extension. So it can be tricky, and if Mr. Sharp were here, to get all the approvals from all these other bodies and financing and all those things. So the 18 months is a bit more generous and realistic. There are, is written in here, opportunities for two extensions, as it's written, they'd be for one year each. There are decision criteria that you get your request in in time. It's not your own fault that you need it. There haven't been substantial changes in the area and the zoning ordinance is similar to what it is. And if it's approved, the zoning administrator, planner and township engineer have to let the planning commission know, hey, we approved this. And then we also say, we want the approved final site plan records with us. And then as built plans, right now, we don't require that explicitly in the zoning ordinance. The administrative site plan review is, is a very similar process. Good for 18 months, currently your zoning ordinance doesn't say how good that approval is for, so could be infinite, so we tried to button that up. Let's see. Onto page 52. It's very similar for amendments and modifications. From your current one. The inspections and maintenance section has been added, basically it clarifies that township engineer needs to get in there and inspect things and you have to pay for the costs as the developer. And that you need to maintain it in the similar manner to what was approved. For site plan information. We've added a bit more flexibility for the size of the paper and the scale. So right now, you guys, it says it has to be no greater than one to 100 if it's a certain lot size. And it requires getting to the planning commission to request permission to do a different scale. This is built in that the zoning administrator can say, yeah, it makes sense to do it at this other scale. But if, once it gets the planning commission, if you guys are like, we, we can't read this, we need better details, you can always have that option to request it. We do also say that even though we've got the extensive list of all the things we want, if it's not important or necessary for review, it can be waived. And that's moved now to the zoning administrator, planner and engineer. With some criteria, but again, if those folks say, we don't need that information, but the planning commission says, wait, wait, we do. You can always say, we need to get that information put on there. So I'm on page 54 right now. I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are based, and again, we went from bullet points to a table form. If you look at the zoning ordinance now, it says preliminary site plan, here are the things you need. And then you go a couple pages and it says final site plan, here are the things you need, plus go back and look at that other section for preliminary. So it can be kind of confusing for applicants to try to, to find around. This is to make it easy, you just go see if there's an X there, you have to include that thing. We also went through some of the engineering standards and pulled some of that information because Mr. Sharp is going to ask for them, so we wanted them to know to include it. Again, we tried to break it into broad categories, things we want to have on the application. General site plan information, site and zoning data, natural features. Access, circulation and parking. We referenced the landscape plan and the lighting plan, the building structure and miscellaneous information. Information about utilities. Information about grading. About stormwater. Additional information for residential site plans. Additional information for non-residential. Additional information for residential planned unit developments, so there are some very specific things and we wanted to say, remember to get these in there. Same thing for open space preservation. And then kind of a generic potpourri, additional things that we may need. It is long, we did at the O R C try to spend fair amount of time sorting out things like, do we need to know this for preliminary? And we tried to make it as light as possible on the applicants at preliminary. Alright, onto page 63. Site plan decision criteria, and again, we took this from a bullet list into table form and separated out different things for different types of approvals because what you're looking at should be a little bit different. So most of these are from the current bullet with a couple of things added in. And again, preliminary, it's the big general thing. So do you have all your information? Will it be injurious to general health, safety and welfare? Is it consistently, generally consistent with the ordinance? So the reason why that was put in there for preliminary is that you're not going to know all of the details, all the parking calculations, all the shrub counts, all those things, but is it generally consistent? Let's see. Not a hot, lot of highlights there, we did try to organize them to flow a little bit better from the current one. Alright, onto page 66. Condominium regulations. These changes are related to the change in site plan approval, so currently, if it's a site condominium, so a bunch of houses versus a condominium building.
Thanks for coming, folks.
It goes to the planning, to the township board for the final answer. But with the changes in site plan, it's the planning commission, these changes are to follow that. Alright, onto page 68, this is another big one. The big difference is the current planned unit development article is kind of a generic. It covers residential and commercial and industrial and mixed use. But it's trying to be all of those things, and sometimes when you focus on everything, you don't really do well for residential. And our observations have been, and my experience in other communities has been that residential planned unit developments, primarily houses are very different from mixed use. So our intent was to create one for residential primarily and one for commercial, industrial, mixed use. The mixed use one, as I mentioned, is not quite ready, but I will go through here. The intent and purpose, it's a bit expanded, and again, we went from a dense paragraph to bullet points because it's easier to, to digest, included reference to state code. For authority, in your For authority, in your current article. The township board, I'm page sixty-nine now, is the final approving authority, the planning commission makes recommendation. And that's partly because your current process is that a planned unit development consists of a zoning map amendment, so it's going from. Residential one to planned unit development. This proposes having the planning commission as the final approving authority. And it would no longer be a zoning map amendment, instead, it would be an overlay district, so it's already in that zone and it's a development option for folks. So the idea is making the process a little bit more compact, and again, the township board's still involved with the development agreement. Uh, the conventional plan would be approved by the planner, the zoning administrator, and the township engineer. Currently, it's not really clear who does that, but if you follow, it's most likely the planning commission. Um, that would allow a little bit easier process um. For applicants. But still having lots of eyeballs, minor modifications, which are defined is with the PUD committee, uh, it's no changes. Big changes go to whoever approved it, which would be the planning commission. Appeal of decision. So in your zoning ordinance, you need to say whether or not a decision on a PUD can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, your current zoning ordinance says no, the draft says no. But this does say, if for example, your planned unit development said front yard setbacks are forty feet. You could still get a variance to be thirty-five feet from the ZBA.
If the PUD was approved.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Qualifying conditions are slightly different. Some of the recognizable and substantial benefit in the current one have been put into things that you have to do. Or as things that you can use to qualify um, for additional lots or or other benefits. Um, so we say you need to have recognizable and substantial benefit, needs to be one person in control of all the properties. It needs to be contiguous, so all the properties have to be together, and you need to do at least two superior design elements. And those are identified later, there are things that are a little bit extra that you might not necessarily do with a regular residential development. The general provisions. As I mentioned, it would be an overlay district in the agriculture suburban farms and residential zoning districts, it's on page seventy. So this is a development option. Your master plan says we would really like to have folks do planned unit developments more than regular developments. And having it as the overlay makes the process easier and encourage folks to do it. You need to get a site plan. If you're gonna divide it, you need to do it through subdivision, a site conduit, or building condominium. Just to clarify, and then open space is similar to what you have now, that anything that's not a lot for. Housing or for other things has to be open space. The next big change from your current is under permitted uses, so I mentioned currently. You can kind of mix and match a lot of uses depending on which zoning district you're in. This proposed article focuses primary on residential uses. Um, so you can have single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, multiple-family dwellings. But the draft would limit it to townhouses, so everyone has to have their own door. And basically, you're you're vertical. With a maximum of six units per building, so not a really long building, we're trying to to limit it. Caretaker's quarters, daycare homes, state-licensed residential facility, and other residential uses in the underlying zoning district. We do also provide the option for other uses. Provided that as part of your review, you find it's not gonna have a substantial impact on the folks in there or in the area, so it's, think of it as kind of a special land use. Review that gets rolled into your PUD. So recreational facilities um, for the residents or the general public. Uh, amenities, clubhouse or pools, small retail store of up to two thousand square feet. Uh, keeping of farm animals, but only in the agriculture or suburban farm zoning districts. And agricultural uses consistent with the GAMS, generally accepted agricultural management practices. For design standards. The cohesive neighborhood design and traditional neighborhood design are consistent with what you've currently got. For location of lots, we've added a bit more uh, meat on there, and before I go too far on here. These are kind of the base design standards that we expect, if you've got a tricky site, or you think you can do. A better project for the community, you have an opportunity to request modifications of these design standards. As part of your process. Utilities, we expect them to be buried, mechanical equipment, we expect to be in the rear yard. So no um, generator or AC condenser in your front yard or your side yard. For access, all of the lots and units would have to come from the internal circulation. Your access points would have to be from paved roads. So that could be a bit of a lift on some some areas where they may have to pave it. But again, the balancing for the PUD is that they're having to do a bit extra and they're getting some benefits for that. Um, and then that the entrances have to be boulevarded, landscape boulevards. Circulation is very consistent with what you've currently got now. Non-motorized like circulation is generally similar, a couple of. Changes, though, is for sidewalks on page seventy-three onto seventy-four. So we're clarifying that you have to put in the sidewalks adjacent to common space, if you've gotta park, you have to put those sidewalks in before folks can start moving in. You have to have the sidewalk in when you move in to the house. If after eighteen months there are undeveloped lots, you have to put the sidewalks in next to those, that's so we don't have. Gaps in the pedestrian system that go out five years or ten years while a lot may remain empty. Uh, one other change for pedestrian is that um, if you have a really long block, more than six hundred and sixty feet. You need to have a mid-block crossing uh, so folks can get from one side to the other. Let's see, under natural resources.
Is it the mid, uh, the mid-street crossing, is that uh, required for private roads as well?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, natural features are substantially similar with what you current have, the twenty-five-foot buffers for anything, we just clarified it on here. You can require a bit wider buffer, um, if there's some weird thing going on with the water body, or if it's a fancy lake that you wanna have extra protection of. Street trees. We added the language very similar to the sidewalks, you need to have them planted next to common spaces before folks moving in to that phase. Need to have the trees next to the house when the folks move in. If you've got undeveloped residential lots, you have to plant them um, within eighteen months or fifty percent of occupancy. If you knock the trees down during construction, you have to put them back. Uh, historic preservation is similar to what you've got now, architectural design is similar. Stormwater management system. Puts a bit more emphasis on natural systems. Phases is similar to what you've got now, if you've got multiple phases, we wanna make sure everything works for phase one and you're not waiting for something from phase two. Open space standards. Um, so this is the spot of a residential planned unit development that doesn't have houses or any of those other uses that you may have approved. You need to have at least twenty-five percent of the net lot area uh, as open space, that's consistent with what you've currently got, the idea is that you wanna have some benefit. Reduce the development. There's a large clarification in this draft from your current one of what is and isn't considered open space. So all the open space things, uplands, so dry land. If you make a water element, if you add a pond or a lake or something, that counts, pathways for public use. Agricultural fields and bio swales um, that you're using for your stormwater. Things that are partially open space. If you put parks around lake, um, it could be up to fifty percent of the lake area depending on how long the park is along the border. A portion of wetlands, a portion of ponds, a portion of floodplains. A smaller portion of underground utilities that you can't build things on top of, and a small portion of golf courses. And these portion things were, they're they're debated quite a bit. So the balancing point is you wanna encourage preservation of these features, but you don't necessarily wanna give full credit. For preserving ten acres of wetland because it's really difficult to build on ten acres of wetland, so it's kind of balancing. Those competing forces. Uh, and we clarify things that are never considered open space. Um, lots, rights-of-way, existing water bodies except um, above. If you have high tension, high voltage power lines running across, that doesn't count. Parking, limited common elements, the area for setbacks around buildings, and if you have a traditional retention base, and that doesn't count. And then we say the things that aren't, that are partially open space can only contribute fifty percent of what you need to provide. You can have more, but only, only up to fifty percent counts. We've added the ownership and control portion there, this is on page seventy-eight, just clarifying that we wanna make sure the open space is preserved and these are ways to do it. Uh, for the design and location of open space. You have current language that says it needs to be on exterior roads. If you have a development or park or something next to you, we wanna have open space next to that. The open space width, uh, if you have open space going between a couple of residential buildings, it says we want that to be a hundred feet wide. The idea is that we expect there are gonna be folks using it, walking through it, and if it's too close, it's not gonna be comfortable for the folks walking through there or the folks living next to it. But again, there's potential to modify that if there's a valley or a bunch of strawberries or something. If it's next to a water body, the planning commission can require it, uh, state-regulated wetlands should be in the open space. And if there are any significant natural features, they should be within there, conservation guarantee is similar to what you've got right now. Additional lots or units, so one of the carrots of PUDs. To balance the the extra work that folks do is the ability to do additional lots or units. Uh, that's based on a conventional plan. Right now, your conventional plan is a basic site plan of showing how you could develop the site with the underlying zoning district, and the planning commission looks at it and says, yeah, we think that could work. The change with the conventional plan is that it would be reviewed by the planner, the zoning administrator, and the township engineer. And there's a couple of options to that, so you could do the traditional site plan to show how you can do it, or you can use math to figure out what that number would be. If you're gonna use the math. We s, we have things that you take out of the lot area. So we start with the um. To do, you take out the rights-of-way cuz you can't build stuff on there. You take out fifteen percent of the net lot area, that's a typical number for what. Um, the roads within a site would account for, you take out the water bodies, you take out easements, you take out portion of wetlands. And you divide that by the minimum lot size and that's kind of a number. Uh, that's a new option, right now, the only option is to do the plan, the advantage for this is that it's an easier, quicker process. And so folks won't spend. Ten or twenty thousand dollars on a plan that disappears in fifteen minutes. Alright. Almost to the back here, thanks you guys for your patience. Um, and then we say, there are two ways that you can get additional units or lots. One is if you provide more open space. And for each one percent increase in open space beyond the twenty-five percent. You can get between one percent and two percent additional lots rounded down depending on your base zoning district. With the maximum of twenty percent. You can also get additional lots by doing superior design elements. Uh, three percent for each one, by providing at least forty percent open space, by providing bigger buffers. By using native species um, for landscaping, by having agricultural operation, by including a mix of residential. By incorporating traffic calming, by dedicating area for uh, public transportation, by that I mean paths and sidewalks. Dedicating land for public use, so if you've got a lake and you wanna dedicate that as a park. Doing fancier buildings, and then the other there is kind of. If they can make a case that something is a superior design element and the planning commission decides yeps, um, that can qualify, again, with a maximum twenty percent from superior design. The total maximum increase would be twenty-five percent for both of those. It's a bit higher than what you've currently got. But remember, if there's not capacity on the roads or the infrastructure, there's still that cap that's gonna limit it. And then if they have additional lots for the clubhouse or whatever, those don't count against the lots. For modification, so a big part of the planned unit developments is being able to modify the standards. To make smaller lots so you can fit houses in there. So we say, if there's another section of the zoning ordinance that says, here's how to modify, you go see that section. For district developmental standards, um, setbacks, lot coverage, lot height, those types of things, here's the process. With a couple of limitations, you can't make really skinny lots and you have to be able to support a septic field if you're gonna have a septic field. And buildings need to be at least five feet from side lot lines. Then it's possible to request modifications to the design standards. And the open space standards. And we've incorporated in there private road standards, it's basically the easement width and the road length that you can request modifications. To. Now, if you do a modification, we want that written on the plan, that's what we're talking about there on page eighty-five documentation. And if they're approved, they basically become the zoning standards for that district. Review process. I'm gonna do this a bit more quickly cuz it's, it tiebars with the site plan process. Um, we're requiring the pre-application, the conventional plan, again, approved not by the planning commission, but by the zoning administrator. Planner and engineer. This does require a public hearing, though, for both preliminary and final, so because you're modifying the developmental standards. We say you you have to go out and get that um, feedback and notify folks, also the state law says you have to, so. It's a good reason to do it. Decision criteria, I'm on page eighty-nine. It's pared down a little bit from what you currently have, and that's because a lot of the things that are in there, you're gonna look at as part of site plan review, so we didn't wanna duplicate it here. Amendments. This is on page ninety. Slightly expanded some of the minor modifications, this would, are things that the planned unit development committee can approve. Anything that's not on there would go back to the planning commission. Alright. Onto page ninety-two. These are administration enforcement kind of technical process things. We've added description for pre-application meetings, it's kind of scattered in a couple places now, we just wanted to clarify what we're trying to do and who should attend. Mentioned the conditions of approval, that would apply to to any approval. Rehearing on page ninety-three, reapplication and suspension are new processes that you don't currently have. Just for these things, it can be a bit contentious, so we wanted to try to lay out a process. Same thing for revocation. On ninety-four. On ninety-five, review of completeness, so that's where we we formalize that the zoning administrator. Needs to determine things are complete before it gets forwarded to this body. Um, development agreement, um, this one, I suspect the township attorney, when they get their full review in. Will have something to say about, it's a very common practice, but there's not a lot of good guidance out there. Uh, to our knowledge about what you can and can't include in those, um, so. Township board is the approving authority for that, and there are certain things that we lay out there to have, that we expect to have. Uh, if it's a minor project, the township board can say, we don't need to have one, and it gets recorded. Onto ninety-seven, the planning commission. Changes, those are related to the changes for the site condominium review, and just for consistency in the other spots. Uh, the final thing, before I finally get to drink some beverage here, is the history and amendments appendix. Uh, that's something that's kind of probably boring and tedious for the general public, but for staff and attorneys, it's really exciting and useful. Um, right now, it only has a couple of things listed in there, the idea is that we would populate that with all previous twenty-five amendments that we've done. Just so that it's easier to determine when sections have changed and what's changed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, effectively emptied the building.
Won't be the first time, I guess.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Scott and Mr. Rentrup and everybody who stayed through that.
And, and before I get to sit down, um. So I, I joked that the township board approved two-hundred-and-twenty-five hours of zoning amendment work this year. I didn't expect that to do us in the first two months of the fiscal year. So for your, your folks on the ordinance review committee, Mr. Nold, Mr. Hunwick, Mr. Turner, Mr. Berger, they have been working their butts off, we've been have. The equivalent of two days where we've had a meeting every week. Um, we do have pizza, which I try to make it easier, but they've been working really hard on this, um, so look to them for questions on why we may have done certain things. After this, it's, it's easy lifting, uh, the, the things we have left. And before I sit down, one last thing, it's a lot. You guys have the opportunity tonight to do a couple of different things. You can pull out the marijuana uses because you've seen that and you're more comfortable and forward that to the township board. It does require a little extra work on the backend for staff, but that's what we're here for. You can forward the whole thing with changes or as it's presented. Uh, you can postpone the whole thing, you can postpone a portion of the thing. Um, and I'll be happy to help out with any of those process questions. And lastly, for the planning commission, um, thank you so much with your patience. We were pushing to get this out last week, but our server got ransomwared. And we lost everything until this Monday morning, uh, we were able to restore it, so thank you very much. If you do see some weird formatting stuff, it's because I was hurriedly trying to recreate. Um, not all of my stuff was recovered, but thank you.
We have to have another public hearing for the, uh, text, do we not? Since you scared everybody away.
I make a motion that we open a public hearing regarding the text at, uh, eight fifty-one this evening.
Okay, eight fifty-one.
I'll second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, uh, roll call.
Okay, Turner?
Here.
Bailey?
Yes.
Uh, Nold?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody in the, uh, audience that would like to comment regarding the text that was discussed? Nobody.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at eight fifty-two and a half.
Okay, we will close, how about eight fifty-two? We'll close the public hearing. Um, we have a motion that's been support, uh, we have support.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been, uh, supported, roll call please.
Alrighty. Bailey?
Here.
No. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Nold?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Comments from township consultants and staff, you still got more to say?
No.
Kelly, your staff?
No sir, I'm okay.
Okay. Alright, review of correspondence.
We have correspondence. Mr. Chair, we have one correspondence by Scott, uh, Cree.
Oh, that's right.
Would you like to, you'd like to make any comment on that or?
Well, he already heard, he was already here and commented on, he gave us some bullet points, is he still, oh, he's still here, yeah.
He's the diehard in the back row.
Do you want to come back up and just have any interjection on your correspondence since it's on the agenda?
Uh, no, I thought I just, uh, was just.
Thank you.
We all did get a copy of it, by the way. Alright, commission discussion. If, I have a question to ask, if we decide to go down the road where Zach said and table some of this. Does he have to go through this whole thing all over again?
We'll watch the video.
No, I'm serious, does he have to go through it all over again? For public record?
Well. I would try to focus on any polishing changes. If it'd help move it along though, I can promise to, to address the whole thing again.
My only concern is I haven't seen a write-up, uh, from, uh, Rentrup and company, Susan Morrison regards to this. I talked with her a little bit today, very briefly, Zach, can you shine a light on that very? Brief, a brief, brief summary?
We, so the previous process we used to use is the ORC would work on amendments. The planning commission would held the public hearing and forward it to the township board. And the attorneys would look at it and oftentimes it would get kicked back to the planning commission and then the ORC. So we've changed our process now where we try to get the attorneys involved after ORC, before planning commission, so if there are anything. They're really concerned about, they can address it before it gets to here. Because of some time pressures, um, there hasn't been a lot of time for them to review it, but we did keep them involved throughout the process. We have made some changes to texts that they had expressed concerns about, we had earlier versions, uh, that included moratorium language, that's been removed. The review of completeness has been changed based on their comments. Uh, right now, my understanding is their, their biggest concerns are they would like for us to. Wait on the residential planned unit development article until we can do both of them. With the idea that we don't want to take away a development option for folks who may want to do the mixed use. My thoughts on that are.
Your recommendation is that, the attorneys?
Yep. It, it's a, it's a very conservative, um, statement and you, you want attorneys who are very conservative and risk averse. My observations are you've had your current zoning ordinance since two thousand and seven. And you have not had a mixed use development, Waterstone was a different thing, it was a central area development that kind of was a mixed. Zoning thing. And those commercial areas haven't been filled out on, on the west side of Market Street. And based on your community, you're going to get residential planning develop, developments much more often, at least in the near term. Um, so we are, we were in the process of, of working on the mixed one. I suspect that will be ready to go this fall, um, so I'm, I personally would not lose a lot of sleep just doing the. The residential PUD article now. They had expressed, uh, some concerns about, uh, the language and the conditions of approval. So again, they wanted to mirror exactly the state language, but the state language applies only to special land uses, not. Site plans or other approvals. Um, a relatively easy way to fix that is in the special land use to reference the state code and then keep the, the general. Conditions of approval as it is, I haven't had a chance to talk with them on that yet. What else have they? The development agreement section, they have expressed, um. An interest in holding that in abeyance until they have time to do a bunch of research on what we can include and what we can include and what has survived legal challenges. Again, it's a very conservative, risk averse position, which you want your attorneys to have. Um, but development agreements are relatively common practice in communities and the information that's in there is kind of generic things that. If you look them up in, in Royal Oak or Ann Arbor or whatever community, they will have things very similar to those.
Well, in a nutshell, are you not, are you comfortable with the text amendments?
Uh, with a couple of minor polishes, like I mentioned, the, the, um, conditional use stuff.
If we could vote to approve it, then they could be modified minorly?
Yep.
There's a major change, we'd have to go back to a public, uh, hearing?
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so you can always as part of your motion with the understanding that. The planner, the engineer and the attorney will work on minor amendments. And then what we can do is we can take those amendments to the chair and say, you think these are minor, we think they're minor. If, if you don't, we can bring it back. Um, but the planning commission's recommendation can always be amended by the township board, however they like. So the marijuana uses that came back to us. The, the township board didn't necessarily need to remand it to you, they could have looked at it, made their changes and adopted it. It was out of an abundance of caution and a desire to have review and feedback that they thought the changes were substantive. And warranted an extra public hearing, but it's not necessarily required.
Mr. Chair, not to put words in your mouth, but didn't you think that our turn? First of all, I want to do a little clarification, Hans Rentrup is, is here for our. Marijuana users, he's the expert. There's another Rentrup, Gary Rentrup and Susan Morrison who worked for the township on our other.
General, yep.
Uh, general, we're talking about the general part now.
Correct, correct.
The Gary Ron, Rentrup and Susan Morrison, didn't they suggest that we hold off on the PUD? Until the commercial PUD was done and move forward?
Yep.
That, so how does, uh, how do you feel about that, Mr. Chair? I picked up that, that message and I picked up the message from what you said is that. If, if we did decide to approve it tonight, we could make incremental changes. Going forward up to including a massive change at the board level, if we felt necessary to, to move this PUD.
Well, what, what's the disadvantage of tabling the, uh, the PUD?
Well, first postpone.
Or postpone.
Postpone means another meeting. The disadvantage, um, so one of the reasons why we kind of increased our process is. Um, there is a project that's looking to use our new PUD article. Uh, we had a pre-application meeting with them and the current one just doesn't really work. And that happens often in development where someone's proposing something that you like. And is better for everyone, better for the community, better for the developer, but it doesn't meet your zoning and it doesn't really hit a lot of the marks for the PUD. So the disadvantage would be delaying that, would delay that project further. Um, from the technical side, it just adds more time because we would have to disentangle those changes from the text that gets forwarded.
Well, what's the, uh.
If we were to let the board see the PUD the way it is today. They probably will come back with some changes. Then you got time to put those changes in and those changes might even affect the commercial. Side that we do.
Yep, so you guys, if you forward the, the residential PUD, the township board could pull that out as well.
Also, we could approve this and the township board could do what they want.
Well, it'd be just like the marijuana.
Right.
You know, we approved it, it went to the township board, they've done what they want. Courtesy they sent it back to us to fix it instead of just fixing it and going.
Well, uh, I guess, uh, we could take a motion and go in whatever direction the board wants to go. I, I mean, from my perspective, I don't, why don't we just go forward with it and let the township board make a decision at that point, but.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make numerous motions.
Okay.
I can make a motion tonight that would encompass all of our activity, if that's what this board desires.
I'm, I'm anxious to hear it.
Unfortunately, gang, this is rather lengthy. Oxford Township Planning Com- uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may make a motion.
The motion includes, uh, a draft resolution on zoning ordinance text and map amendments. A res- revel, so this, this is for the entire evening's activities, the map and all the other things that we've done. A resolution for the favor, a favorable recommendation for text and map amendments to the Oxford Township zoning ordinance. Whereas Oxford Township, the township through its ordinance review committee, planning commission and township board. Identify a number of desired amendments to the township zoning ordinance as part of a twenty-twenty-two work plan. Whereas the ordinance review committee has prepared a draft zoning text amendment and zoning map amendment. For the planning commission consideration based on that twenty-twenty-two work plan. And whereas the planning commission has received materials including draft zoning texts and zoning map amendments. From Zachary Michelle, the planning consultant dated April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas the zoning text amendment process is outlined in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, PA. One, one zero of two zero zero six, article eighteen amendment of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the public hearing has been, been noticed as required by law. And whereas the zoning text amendment would apply throughout the township zoning jurisdiction. Whereas the zoning map amendments would affect those properties identified in the public hearing notice. And whereas the proposed zoning text amendments would affect two-point-two definitions. Three-point-one establishments of zoning districts, three-point-four intent of districts, three-point-five schedule of use regulations. Three-point-seven schedule of district regulations, four-point-six condit- conditions of safeguards. Four-point-eight reapplication, five-point-three-two wireless communication facilities. Five-point-three-five mari- marijuana cultivation building and marijuana usage. Six-point-seven dwellings in non-residential districts, six-point-two-six marijuana regulations. Seven-point-one, uh, contents, seven-point-three specific landscape requirements for zoning districts. Seven-point-nine landscape plan submissions, requirements and information. Eight-point-six off-street parking requirements by uses, nine-point-seven signs in, in residential districts. Nine-point-eight signs in non-residential districts, ten-point-one environmental performance regulations. Ten-point-two, exterior lighting, article twelve, site plans, thirteen-point-five site condominiums. Thirteen-point-seven. Conversations, uh, excuse me. Conversion condominiums, article fourteen residential planned unit development. Sixteen-point-one-two pre-application conference, sixteen-point-one-three condition of approval. Sixteen-point-one-four rehearsing, sixteen-point-one-five reapplication, sixteen-point-one-six suspension. Sixteen-point-seven re- uh, revocation. Sixteen-point-nine review of completeness, sixteen-point-one-nine development agreement. Nineteen-point-four powers and duties of the planning commission and appendix A, history and amendments of the zoning ordinance. And. Whereas the proposed zoning map amendments would establish four MP marijuana provisionings overlay districts. And move to redefine zoning districts boundaries, I have to rescind that. One-ten will read, whereas the proposed zoning map amendments would establish three marijuana provisionings overlay districts. And move redefining zoning district boundaries.
Good, good catch.
Whereas the proposed zoning text and zoning map amendments would generally advance the goals and objectives of the township's master plan. And whereas the planning commission at its two, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two meeting held a duly noticed public hearing. For the proposed zoning text amendments and zoning map and did receive public comments. Excuse me, board, we received public comments in regards to this, correct?
Correct.
Been a long night, thank you. One-forty, whereas the planning commission provided recommendations to the township board for the zoning texts and zoning map amendments. Now therefore be resolved, the planning commission by a majority vote at the duly noticed regular meeting held. Twenty-eighth day of April, twenty-twenty-two, made a favorable. Recommendation of the proposed zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments to the township board. And be it further resolved, the planning commission directs the township staff to forward this resolution. And the associated zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments to the township board. That's it. Thank you.
Include the additions discussed that were not including the written statements as to the marijuana regulations. So those that I went through with you.
I would also like to add to the, the very end of my motion, it'd be one-six, one-seventy. Be it res- further resolved to add the, Mr. Rentrup's. it'd be one-six, one-seventy, be it further resolved to add the, Mr. Rentrapp's.
Changes as discussed.
Changes as discussed in our meeting and recorded by our duly appointed secretary.
I'll second.
I'm, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded, roll call.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Nold?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And to clarify, the marijuana provision overlay that's to be removed is the northern one.
That according to Mr. Rentrapp's presentation.
Okay. Nine, we're in unfinished business, we have none. Thank God. Ten, new business, we don't have any there either. Communication or committee reports?
Nothing.
None.
Economic Development Committee, none, ordinance review committee. Do you want to?
Take a little break.
We're in a break?
A little bit of a break.
I guess everything we talked about today was us. Planner, engineer reports. You had any more to add?
Just again, thank, thank you for everyone for your efforts tonight. That was a really big chunk. Look at your master plan, we're tearing through a lot of the things that are mentioned in there, which is really good to do. Again, kudos and thanks for your patience, the ordinance review committee and staff. Two thousand and five hundred envelopes is a lot to stuff. I think at one point, everyone in the building department and a couple of other departments were folding and stuffing those things, so thank you. It could not have happened otherwise. Just to follow around the process, this will get forwarded, those changes will get forwarded to the township board. We'll, we'll make the incorporate, incorporate the changes you heard tonight and also try to get with the township attorney. The township board has to have two readings because you're a charter township, so it'll be at their two meetings. I believe they're planning to do it at their May eleventh for their first one, but they may delay it. And because some of the proposed zoning map amendments are adjacent to other boundaries from communities, so Orion Township and Village of Oxford, this, the zoning map amendments will also be reviewed by the Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee for feedback and comment. It's not entirely clear where the process is. If the township board does it at their May meeting, there probably won't be time for review, but there will be time definitely for comment for when they would consider it the second time. That's a big, big chunk you guys did. Go home, get some good sleep.
Do you have to give the same presentation to the board?
I don't know if they're going to let me talk that long.
I don't want to hear the same one.
No, but I am, I am planning on being there when they do discuss it just because of the complexity and the breadth of what's before them. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sharp's not here, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.